Good evening and welcome to a special edition of 30 at 6 on Cecil TV. I'm Allison Donnelly. Tonight, we welcome into the studio primary candidates for Cecil County Council District 2, Bill Kautz and Rich Lewandowski, for a panel discussion presented by Cecil TV and the Cecil Whig, moderated by Jacob Owens, managing editor of the Cecil Whig. Jacob, thanks so much for being here.
Pleasure.
And congratulations on your Best of Show Award and the many other accolades that the Whig received at the Press Association Awards.
Much appreciated. It was a good year for us down in Annapolis, and we always look forward to it. It was a specially good year.
Cool. So, one question before we get started that I wanted to ask you was, what is the importance of the press as opposed to other entities questioning candidates?
When it comes to really getting a look at who a candidate is and what's important to them, we think it's important that you really come in from an impartial viewpoint. The press is called the fourth estate for a reason. We definitely appreciate the efforts of groups like the Cecil County Chamber of Commerce, the Cecil County Republican Club, Republican Club of Cecil County, as well as others that bring together candidates so that people can get a look. But, at the same time, they're always coming with a different agenda, with a different viewpoint in terms of what's important to them and what they feel should be important to people attending and listening to the forum or the event, the debate. So, we, as the paper of record for Cecil County for 176 years now, feel that it's important that we come only from a place of looking for the truth, whether that's pleasant or unpleasant. We don't come in with any agenda. We just hope to find out what a candidate truly thinks and try to give readers an idea of how we think they're going to vote in the future.
Great. Thanks so much.
Welcome. My name is Jake Owens. I'm the managing editor of the Cecil Whig newspaper. I'm here with a couple of candidates for Cecil County Council District 2. That's currently represented by outgoing council president Joyce Bowlesby, who chose not to run for reelection this year. It represents the greater Elkton area, and it is elected countywide. So, regardless, if you live in the district, you will be voting in this district. And I'm going to introduce the candidates here to my right. First is Bill Kautz.
Thank you, Jacob. Good evening, everyone. Bill Kautz, lifelong resident of Cecil County and made the decision to get into the race for District 2, Own County Council, based on past history and experience in the business world, management and sales, and grew up in Cecil County and felt it was time to actually give something back to the community that's been so good to me.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
And to Bill's right is Rich Lewandowski. He's our other candidate.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Rich Lewandowski, I lived in Cecil County now, Elkton, for 19 years. I moved into the same neighborhood my wife grew up in for 40-some years she's lived there. In-laws live up the street from us. We have our two boys, 15 and 14. We chose Cecil County for that reason. We chose Cecil County to raise our family, raise our children. Reason why I'm running was very simple. I just have not seen people like me represented on the council, and that is the hard-working folks that I see out every morning, whether it's rain, sleet, or snow, out there doing hard work for everybody. I just don't see us out there represented. Thank you.
In this format, we're going to ask a couple of questions of our candidates, and Rich has graciously accepted to take the first of our topics tonight. It is, of course, the dwindling days of May here, and chief on the minds of most Cecil County residents is the budget. This is the second budget proposed under county executive Alan McCarthy. Last year's budget was fraught with some difficulties after the Cecil County Council debated for some time as to some cuts to that budget, and ultimately, at the 11th hour, could not pass a budget of their own, therefore allowing county executive McCarthy's budget to become law. I'm interested, right from the standpoint, Rich, looking back over the county executive's first two budgets, how do you feel that he's done? And what would you have done if you had been sitting in those seats last year?
That's a great question. How do I think he's done? I will say this. I think that, I think it was George Patchell said it best in one of the forums. He said, "You don't know what you're getting into until you take over the position." And I think that's where the county executive went. I think he felt very strong when he was on the council, and then when he got into the county executive position, I think he's overwhelmed. It's a position unlike the council. The council is made up for the people, by the people. When you're the executive, you're trying to keep everybody happy, and, well, that's what he's trying to do, keep everybody happy. The job is not to keep everybody happy. The job is there for the budget. The job is there to do the right things with Cecil County and our budgets. So, how do I think he's done? I think he's overwhelmed. I'll say that. That's the best I can say. I think the job overwhelmed him. What would I do different? The same things I would do in any budget I was running, whether it was my home or, more importantly, the businesses that I've run. You bring in all the departments that are involved, and you get their buy-in. The only way that you are going to get a true feeling for what is needed and what is wanted is bringing those people into the room. If you have those people sitting there listening to why they need the funds they need, they're going to start to look at things and say, "Okay, maybe my reason isn't as important." And I'll use the schools, for example. You know, how could a, I don't know, let's just say the libraries. How could the libraries, you know, sit there in a room where we're talking about needing counselors and psychiatrists and psychologists and all these things to educate our children and to educate the whole child? How can the libraries then say, "Well, jeez, but we still want our money to build a very large library"? I think if you bring everybody in, they're going to do the right things as a community, if they mean the things they're saying. If they truly mean that we're here for the community, we're all part of the community, then when you sit there and put it in the real terms, they will sit back and say, "You know what? You're right. Maybe it just isn't the time. We'll get that library. Maybe it's five, six years off, but right now, let's do the right things by," you know, I used the schools, for instance. But, you know, there's always going to be some department that needs something more right now, and by bringing them all together, then it's not just all on him.
Sure.
So, that would be what I would do different.
Bill, your thoughts on the county executive's first two budgets and, you know, how you would have approached his first budget, which was controversial?
Sure. The one thing I agree with Rich is it's a very daunting job. You're talking about a $300 million budget for the county. Where I don't agree is I don't believe that county executive McCarthy was overwhelmed. I think he took the job very, very strongly and walked into some things that were very difficult. Healthcare for the county being basically bankrupt at the time, and, you know, your first days in the office that you have to turn around and write a check that should have been done long before that. So, I think his approach to the budget process was handled very well. We now have operated for two years, and this will be the second year going in if the budget is approved, that we're operating in a balanced budget.
Sure.
You know, the government should always be striving to operate on a balanced budget, no different than we as individuals, take a look at our budget, you know, our home budget, or our businesses, as Rich said, and, you know, the objective is always to operate in a balanced position. The other thing that is noteworthy is we're in a balanced budget situation, and we're in a balanced budget situation in a way that has not required that we draw from the fund surplus. So, we're not hitting our rainy day savings account just to finance or allocate for the cost of the county itself. So, as far as how it would react to it, the same as I do with any other budget process, and that is to look at the budget overall, see where allocations lie, make sure that we have eliminated any type of redundancy in our services and overlap, make sure that allocations are properly resourced and positioned for the different departments. I agree with Rich that you always have to go to your departments and find out where their real needs are and make sure that they're prioritized, make sure that we're not putting certain objectives and goals ahead of others when they may not have the same importance to the county itself.
Sure.
I believe we're headed to that same direction now in the second budget, everything I've looked at, the proposed budget. You know, we're, again, you know, just over $300 million this year, and, you know, there are large allocations in there, certainly for Cecil County Public Schools, our emergency services, but I think we can all agree that those are awfully important services for the county. And, yes, it sometimes seems that, you know, it's difficult to look at something that may be a very large number and have a very large number attached to it, and without looking further into it and doing the in-depth research that's necessary, it becomes sometimes easier to dismiss those costs as not important or not something that the county, and I've heard this said, and it bothers me, that the county deserves. Our county deserves as much as we can give our county within the resources that we have available to the county government. Dr. McCarthy's main objective is to look at the resources that we have been allocated by the county through the tax base and make sure that they are properly allocated to the needs of the county itself.
Sure. Now, of course, one of the perhaps most controversial parts of Alan McCarthy's first budget was a 5-cent property tax increase, a small percentage increase on the personal tax as well, and the income tax. I think one of the loudest criticisms of county executive McCarthy's second budget really is, I think folks would mainly agree that if these are needed services, if this is for police officers or clinical counselors and schools, that you would pony up the extra money that that tax increase created. But I think one of the loudest criticisms of his budget has been large spending on projects like parks and libraries. Wondering, in your mind, do you feel that the administration has wisely budgeted the increase in funds that was the result of the tax increase last year?
I do. I think that he has allocated them properly. Some of those projects are large. You know, the library is a large project. We need to also remember that we're getting a two-for-one in the project, the library project, where we're moving the administrative offices for the Cecil County Public Libraries to the new facility, therefore actually getting inherently an expansion of our Elkton Library Services. And libraries are very important to our community. You know, we're economically growing, and we're bringing new jobs to the county, and we have to make sure that we have an adequate resource of employment pool to fill those jobs. Part of that is going to be education, a large part of that. And we're not just talking about primary and secondary and higher education, but also adult education also. And the library can present resources that personally they may not be able to afford, whether it's computer access, there are software programs out there that are prohibitive in costs that an individual would not be able to access, and those are the things that build job skills. And job skills are what we need to grow in this county. We've got a good plan going forward for economic development. We're bringing the jobs in. We're attracting the companies that we need to in our growth corridor. But we have to be able to properly fill those jobs at that point, or it's going to be difficult to attract other companies, so.
So, fair to say that you see these large expenses, not just as expenses, but investments in terms of the county's future?
I do. And, you know, you oftentimes have to take the first steps to plant the seeds and do the things that are necessary to get programs in place to fulfill those jobs. Having the jobs here, that's part one. Part two is being able to fill those jobs with Cecil County residents. If we bring businesses to the county and then have to farm those jobs out to Newcastle or Hartford or Lancaster County, that takes the organic tax-based growth that we're looking for away from Cecil County itself, and I want to make sure that we keep it here.
Rich, your thoughts on that in terms of, you know, whether the administration's allocations of the new tax funds has been proper, or would you like to see a change in focus in terms of some of these larger projects?
Well, I think you can go back and look at the last couple of elections and see some of the issues that have been there, you know, whether it be the homeless, the drug issues. There's core issues here in Cecil County. If, like I say, the one thing, what we need to do is if we're going to bring new people in, then we need to fix our house. We need to clean our house up a little bit. If you're going to invite people over to your home, then you make sure everything was done nicely to your home. We need to do the same things to our county. So, to answer your question, no, we have some core things that we need to address first before we start looking at larger expenditures. Now, and I'll say it, I mean, everybody, the county executive has a very hard job, and, you know, it's hard to say this isn't personal, because it is, it's our tax money, right? But it's business, and we'll talk from the business side of it. Everybody's coming to him with their hands out, okay? So, what we depend on him to do is to choose those people that are going to receive the money and why. And then, as the council, our job is to represent the residents and say that, "Well, no, we think that these things could be changed," and to question those things. So, are they being budgeted correctly? Not when we still have the core issues we have, not when we still have, you know, I'll use the situation, not when we have, we don't have a police officer for me, you know, a police officer in every school. You know, we had a shooting on Friday. The first thing I would have liked to have seen was not only Dr. McCarthy, but everybody who's involved in the budget, the schools, the libraries, the police, say, "You know what? Before we have this meeting on Tuesday," we just had the meeting on Tuesday, "to the public, let's go back and look, because I think this brings the light where we should be concentrating some things at." If we are still talking about, and again, if anybody went to that meeting, you know, they talked to your sick about the libraries and things like that, we didn't talk about things such as, you know, safety in the schools, and that's an issue. And that's an issue, that we didn't turn around and say, "You know what? This is something at the forefront. We need to fix this right now."
Sure. Switching gears, just to keep moving a little bit, one of the things I'm interested to ask you guys about tonight is land use policy. That's not always a sexy topic, but it's an important topic, especially in a county like Cecil County where so much of it is rural. We're proud to be rural. It has a long heritage of agricultural life and industry here. Last year, the council was confronted with an issue in terms of whether to allow the growth of large-scale farming, also known as concentrated animal feeding operations. We're starting to see a small growth of those, and from what we understand, a growing interest among farmers who are having difficulty navigating this, you know, global economy in terms of farming. I'm wondering, in terms of your personal opinion, how much the county should allow additional development and additional growth in what are traditionally rural areas of our county?
The issue is there, well, I'll start by saying that. I've been working in Baltimore for a good bit of the last 10 years or so, and the one thing they always said is, "Oh, yeah, they call me Cecil County when they see me." "You guys love your horses over there." You know, so they, there are certain things we're known for, you know? They come here to see those beautiful things. I mean, people in Baltimore get to see a horse, right? And when they drive past, they get to see a field of horses. It's wonderful, right? When they go through Cecil County, we're known for those types of things. My first account that I was responsible for, for a company I worked for years ago, was ECN Seaboard Farms, Deag Farms, down in Cecilton. These are core businesses that have grown in Cecil County, and they need to stay that way. So, what do we do? We definitely continue to embrace that, and we plan around that. We plan communities so that communities can not get in the way of those, but enjoy those things. Wouldn't it be nice to have a community of, I don't know, 200, 300 homes that is self-sufficient, because then it has a little business park there where there's a gas station, and there's a little restaurant, and the roads are taken care of properly so that there's not a lot of traffic? So, to answer your question, we need to embrace what has made us Cecil County, and that is the rural parts, the reason why I've moved here, and we need to plan our communities. You know, we don't, we can't be, I don't know if anybody's been in Middletown lately. You try to get through Middletown in the middle of the day, you're not getting through, because everything goes through the middle of town. We cannot have everything go through Route 40 or throughout there. We need to do proper planning.
Bill?
Well, I agree. I mean, I grew up in an area that was predominantly agricultural. I grew up in Calvert, and my parents had a farm outside of Elkton before that. And, you know, that area has changed, even the area that I grew up in in Calvert there, which is, happens to be where the CAFO that you were talking about
Sure.
was located down in the Zion area, not far from here, obviously. And it is changing, and agriculture is changing. Agriculture is no longer the big sprawling farm and, you know, cows and whatever the crop it is that you have in the field. Agriculture is now agribusiness.
Right.
And that changes the environment of that business itself, and we have to be able to, as a county, number one, understand and respect that, but number two, allow that to organically change. And I think what we're really getting at here is what we call responsible growth. The county is going to grow. The state is growing, the country is growing. We're going to have additional citizens that are moving into the area. They're going to look for services that we talked about. We're going to look for a nice place to live. They're going to look for good roads. They're going to look for good schools. They're going to look for the services that we talked about, whether it be a library or a park or whatever it might be. So, it's a matter of understanding where those areas are. In the northern and southern part of our county, you know, that's our designated or has been inherently our agricultural portion of the county. And then, we've got this designated growth corridor that has been very well-defined. Infrastructure has been put in place, and that has become the area where that will change those areas. So, I think it's responsible growth, and I think we can accommodate all of these things.
The goal then continuing to be, as the administration has kind of planned, to funnel growth and new development along the Route 40 corridor, is that what you would agree with?
Absolutely. And I think, you know, that makes sense because of transportation, you know, you have I-95 and any access to Baltimore and Philadelphia airports and seaports, also train transportation as well. So, it makes sense that, you know, we have those areas designated and highlighted, and that we've put the infrastructure there in place to support those businesses as they come, and not only support them, but attracts them to those areas. So, that allows our rural areas in the northern, southern part of the county to continue to prosper in that agricultural, and let's face it, we like the more rural areas that they represent there.
Right. One of the difficulties with land use planning is that there's a lot of different motivations behind it, and while we often look at rural areas and say, "We'd love to keep them rural. We want to see the horses. We want to see the farms." By doing that, we often limit land values for farmers, because if they can't develop their land, their land is significantly, has a significantly different value than if they were able to develop it. I'm wondering, Rich, in terms of how much do you balance kind of the wants and needs of farmers in terms of that end, as well as, you know, allowing them to get maximum value out of their land while also trying to keep the aesthetic that we've come to grow and love here in the county?
Well, I mean, as far as, you know, my true principles, conservative principles, I mean, that land is their land to do what they want with it. Now, you look at things, how it'll affect other people, you know, and that would be, you know, congestion on our roads and such, but the best way I can answer that question and keep it simple is that is their 401K plan. That is what they've invested, as Bill said, whether it's been in the family for years or whether, you know, they've invested in that, that is something that they will hope to reap the benefits of, whether it is by farming the land or selling that land to a development. We're not here to get in their way. We just want to make sure that we are part of the plan when it comes time to be able to change that to, you know, whatever it's going to grow into.
As the county comes upon comprehensive rezonings, ensuring that you guys are mapping out a future that you want 10, 20 years down the line in terms of where you want growth to be going and where you don't want it to be.
You can't just have a contractor come in and do what they want to do, right? Because, let's face it, they'll just do what they want to do.
Sure.
I think there's also, you know, an opportunity to allow those things to happen. You know, we've got an area in Fair Hill now that, you know, has been historically, you know, preserved, it was the old William DuPont Estate, and that's been preserved through the Department of National Resources. And now, there's some exciting growth that's going to happen in that area.
Right.
You know, we've been approved and nominated for the, one of only seven five-star equestrian events, three-day events in the world. And, you know, that will take a piece of land that has been preserved and yet put it to a greater use. We're talking about an economic impact of $25, $30 million. We're talking 80,000 to 100,000 people for this event that come into Cecil County. That's the type of responsible growth that I think we've been fortunate to have the leadership in place, and they have that foresight to say, "Okay, this is a unique piece of property. This is something that falls in that agricultural area, but let's find a use for that that benefits the entire county."
Right.
And in all honesty, that will benefit the state. So, you know, that's the type of foresight and the type of in-depth, you know, research that needs to go into these things and make sure that we're using the land in the county properly.
Sure. Switching gears a little bit as well, similar topic, but kind of the other end of the spectrum. The county is also growing quite rapidly in terms of economic development. When you look at the last two years or so, and you look at projects like Lidl, you look at Amazon, you look at Medline and True Air and others that are moving into the Route 40 corridor, I'm wondering, your opinion, we'll start with Rich, in terms of where do you think the county's economic development strategy is now? Is it what you would like it to be? And, you know, would you like to see us pursuing other kinds of employers?
Well, we have the Department of Economic Development, and I think they're doing their job well. I mean, they are looking at these things. I know they have some internal things, people retiring and such, but, you know, we hope that the county executive is bringing them in and talking to them about what, you know, who are we looking at? What businesses are we looking at? Why do they want to come here? Why don't they want to come here? And then, we can use those, that information to figure out what businesses we do want to come here. But let's keep in mind, I know I've heard over a number of times, technology, want to break technology into it. I think it's a great idea, but what industry changes more in five, 10 years in technology? I grew up in an area where you wanted one of three jobs. You either wanted to work for GM, you wanted to work for Chrysler, or you wanted to work for DuPont. I'm 49 years old, and I'd be out of a job right now if I was following that. That's, we have to watch, you know? We have to, we have to look and make those proper decisions. How we make those proper decisions is we don't choose what types of businesses. If we have the proper, happy residents, entrepreneurs here, building the businesses that they want, and we're able to do as a council, as a county, keep that money that they're making in their pockets, businesses will come, right? Build it, they will come. If businesses will come here because they want the revenue, well, then those businesses now we can choose. We don't have to spend money to bring people in. We can sit back and say, "What businesses are right for Cecil County at that time?" Because what's right for Cecil County right now may not be the same in five years, and in five years, it's going to change. So, we need to be able to choose what we need when we need it.
Bill, your thoughts on economic development strategy for the county currently?
I think the economic development strategy is on point, and if you look at our county strategic plan, it's following it very closely. Job creation was focus number one, and, you know, in creating approximately 2,000 jobs over the past two years, I'd say we're doing pretty well in that category. And these are not minimum wage jobs. I visited the Amazon grand opening, and, you know, it has 1.2 million square feet under roof there, and 1,100 jobs, and, you know, benefits from day one. The day you walk on the job site, you know, you're covered with health, dental, vision. And after one year, they will prepay 95% of your tuition, college tuition, and go back to school. Those are the kind of jobs that we need to bring to the county, because that puts in place a plan going forward to develop that employment pool that we're talking about. To the point that Rich is talking about, about building it, and they will come, we do need those services, the quality of life. Believe it or not, people look for parks. I don't know if anybody's ever been over to the Glasgow Park on 896 and Route 40. There's not a day that goes by that place is not packed, and we're actually using that as a model for the new bittersweet park down there. So, yeah, I think we're on the right path, and I think we just need to continue and stick to the plan and go forward.
So, to your earlier point in terms of investing in some of those projects, you see that as a facet of the economic development strategy in terms of trying to attract these employers, things like parks and libraries?
Absolutely, directly.
I'm wondering, one of the few criticisms that the county's received in terms of economic development strategy in, over the last year, has been, there were a number of large acquisitions, landings, but the majority of them were in distribution. And frankly, we're on Route 40, we're on Interstate 95. We are kind of the prime target market for most people in the eastern seaboard that want to deliver something. And frankly, there probably will be many more companies looking to locate distribution plants here if we allow them, and I guess, or, you know, if we seek them out. The question is, how much would you want to see the county kind of get into that? How much, now that we've got a number of large acquisitions, would you like to see them go in a different direction?
I think we, those jobs have certainly been good, and they've been a great base and foundation for what we're doing from an economic development standpoint, but we do need diversification. And, you know, through the Economic Development Office, and Chris Moore is doing a great job in there, you know, they're now looking outside of the areas that we drew from before. We're now looking at Philadelphia, we're looking into Pennsylvania. So, the diversification is So the diversification is not lost on these gentlemen and these ladies. And that's what we need. You always want diversification because if a certain sector of the economy were to take a dive, you don't want to have all your eggs in that basket. And, you know, I think we all saw that in '08, '09, and a little bit into '10. I was working and managing a company down in the DC area who was very, very heavily weighted into the federal government sector. And boy, I tell you, when sequester came into play, that was a bad day for those guys. So we definitely need diversification. But this has been an excellent foundation for going out and being able to attract the other businesses that will bring that diversification to us. And again, we need to be able to fill those jobs when they do become available. So we have to make sure that we do have, and we have built the things that Rich has alluded to. And then, yeah, companies will be attracted to come here.
Rich, just in terms of, you know, do you turn down a prospect that brings a few hundred jobs if it's, you know, potentially maybe boxing out a prospect in a different industry?
Well, you know, the answer, when you were first saying that, I would say, no, you don't turn down, somebody's coming in, is going to get jobs. But if you are doing the right things, then you have choices. And so if our, if our economic development department and just us in general are doing the right things, then we have choices. And then that's where we can make the educated decisions. Again, you're right, we cannot, well, you know, the way we're situated, we're perfect for the distributions. And if that's the way Cecil County goes, then we need to make sure that those guys are here for the long term also. If they're going to invest in us, then they also need to be here. And we need to make sure they're, they're the right companies. They're not just startups. You know, they are the larger Amazons, you know, companies like that. But we cannot, yeah, we cannot say that we only want to bring in certain businesses. And again, just our principals are going to say, we're not here to dictate who comes in. We're just going to make sure when they do come in, they're benefiting the residents of Cecil County.
Sure. Switching gears again a little bit. This is a topic you guys have brought up a bit as we got started, but throughout the budget process, the school system is a large part of that. And certainly, there are a number of needs that the administration did not fund, and they are actively lobbying for, to get the council to restore those funds. I'm just wondering, first and foremost, your thoughts on where the public education system is in the county today? Do you feel that it's doing a good job? Do you feel like it could do better? And as an associated question, you know, whether we're adequately funding the school system?
Yeah, it's a question that I think we've been posed with on many occasions, and rightfully so. It's certainly one of the most important topics or subjects that we have in front of us and will be faced with at county council. I believe that we are adequately funding our education system, but yet we would always like to do more. I think, you know, if you talked with our education system as well, they would tell you that, you know, we're doing well, but we want to do better. You know, our graduation rates are up, test scores are increasing, Cecil College is graduating more associate degree graduates than ever before. We're getting an expansion there, I think. And our libraries are growing, and that's part of the three-legged stool, as I call it, for education. You know, it's, none of those things can stand on their own. They need the support of one another. We have a program now that's being launched at Cecil Community College where a high school student would be able to graduate from high school with a two-year degree, associate's degree. That's, that's pretty impressive, you know what I mean? And then they're not just going to give you that. You're going to have to work for that. And that's going to be an incentive to a student to graduate from high school and then have transferable credits that can be transferred to a four-year institution. I mean, think about the savings in student loans.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, that's, that's a huge part of the debt load that's on our graduating students coming out of there. So when we can do things like that that improve that situation, I think we've got, we've got a work cut out for it, but I think we're doing a good job.
Rich, in terms of where we are today with the public school system?
Well, you know, if you were a new resident coming in, you were going to purchase a home in Cecil County, you would go online, you type in, you'd use one of the search engines, and you'd see where you wanted to live, and you'd look at the school districts. That's probably one of the first, first things that somebody's going to do. And I think if you do that, you know, which I've done in preparation for this, you know, schools are, you're seeing above, you know? So, you know, can we do better? Yes, sure. But none of our schools are struggling. The other night, during the open budget meeting with everybody, well, really, I loved the turnout of the schools and the teachers. They were all in their red shirts, and it was wonderful to see. They're very passionate people, and they care about our kids. But I think there's a disconnect, because I think they think possibly that people don't care about the kids and that they think that they're not funded properly, and they somehow want to cut their budget. Never at one single point was cutting the school budgets ever discussed. Nobody got up and said that we want to see less money go to schools. If anything, they want to see more money, you know, go to schools. They want to see less money go to other things that are not as important as the schools. So are the schools properly funded? Yes. Do they need help? I think one teacher put it the best way, we need to educate the entire student. You know, we have students that are children that have horrible home lives. They have no role models. Whether they have a mom and dad there to begin with, but they don't have a role model. So the schools have to take over at that point. So what we need to do is to make sure that they understand that three-legged stool, that two of those legs may need to take a little bit of a back, be in the background of the schools for a little while until we get that handled.
In terms of, you gave them a C grade, and so I'm interested, but you also feel that they're adequately funded. I'm wondering, how then do you, in your opinion, how would the schools increase a grade or two?
Well, not all, I guess, may have said that wrong, not all schools. There was, you know, if you're going through, you're looking through, there was some schools that had Cs, others that were As and Bs.
Sure.
No, not, I wouldn't give the entire school system a C. I would give them a good B+. You know, where would you do, you know, you would first look at, just like anything, where's your weakest links? And that's going to be your children that are struggling.
Okay.
So where, where do we invest? We invest in those teachers that have the special educations to educate the special children. The children that don't learn as quick as the other ones, the children that don't have the role models, you know? Bill probably said the same thing. How many times have I interviewed somebody for a position? I was in pest control for 20-some years, you know, managing pest control companies. And I could probably name on one hand how many times somebody came in with a tie on, let alone a suit, a suit on. You know, there's an education level that we need to increase of common sense sometimes for children.
Okay. Switching gears one more time for you guys tonight, somewhat connected to Rich's last comments. The county is seeing, like many places in this country right now, a dramatic crisis in terms of opioid and substance abuse. I'm wondering, the county, you know, has instituted a number of different efforts to try and lower that rate. Unfortunately, even through the first roughly six months of this year, we're seeing a still increasing number of not only total overdoses, but fatal overdoses. I'm wondering, in your opinion, where should the county be focusing efforts to try and turn that tide?
You're right. It's an absolute tragedy, and it's hard to believe, you know, we had 585 overdoses last year, 70 of those were fatal. And the fact that we're actually on a pace to break that is, it's hard to wrap your head around. I've talked with, with several people that are involved in the substance abuse task force in Cecil County. And as bad as you think that it is, it's far worse. And this isn't something that's going to be addressed or made go away today, tomorrow. This is a five, 10-year problem. And if we don't start taking serious measures to address it fully, it could take longer than that. It's a three-legged approach. You're going to need, first and foremost, you're going to need education. You have children now that are in homes and environments that where drug abuse and drug use is normalcy. So we have to get to those children early. We have to get to them often. We have to get to them consistently with education and alternatives. They need to understand that there are, that is not normal, and that there are alternatives to that, whether it's sports programs or theater or any other types of clubs. The second portion of it has to be enforcement. There is no doubt about that. Any of our emergency, our sheriffs and Maryland State Police will tell you that enforcement is a part of that, that solution. And that, that includes additional and stiffer penalties for repeat offenders and also distribution offenders. And last, but certainly not least, and probably foremost, recovery has to be made available, and that has to be put out there. We need, we need more services along those lines. And we have to actually help the people that truly want to free themselves from addiction.
Rich, same question.
You know, I struggle with that question because we could talk all night about it, right? I mean, so I'll take it as far as what the council can do.
Right.
And, you know, what the council can do is allocate and make sure that the funds are there to clean our county up. We need to make it, and I've said it before, we need to make it where you cannot do drugs and you cannot use drugs in Cecil County. I'm not, we're not harassing, but we are getting the people off the streets. If we keep pushing the people off the streets, then what will happen is the folks that really want help, when they want help, because any of us know that unfortunately had, you know, addiction come into our families, know that people want help at different times. When they're high, when they're low, it's an ebb and flow. But when they really have hit rock bottom, that's when that help comes in. That's when we need to make sure there's people there to help them. But until then, we need to look out for the majority of Cecil County and say that we want to be able to walk our streets and not worry about the folks that are meandering around. So the police force needs to be strong enough that we clean up our streets and we move the people. If they want to go sell drugs and they're not, they're not ready for recovery right now, or not ready to stop selling, then they got to do it in some other county. And that's terrible to say, but I don't live in those other counties. I live here in Cecil County. So you need to leave Cecil County. You can't do this season in Cecil County. And here's the thing, we do that, guess what? I know we talk about, you know, that Annapolis doesn't respect us. We start taking hard-nosed approaches like that, Annapolis is going to turn around and say, geez, look what Cecil County's doing. Let's start listening and take a look at those things. So the first and foremost is just a hard-nosed approach. And then those folks are left behind, we're here to help them.
All right. To that point, you know, would it be fair to say then that the, in your view, the council's primary focus should be then in law enforcement and trying to crack down on dealing and use in the county?
Correct. Proper allocations of our funds to make sure that the police force has enough men on the street, men and ladies on the street to clean their streets up. And safely. They need the equipment to do it properly. We don't have any control over the courts. You know, we, as you know, there's plenty of signs out there right now showing all the folks that'll be handling those types of things. So we need to put the right people in those positions.
Right.
That once they are arrested, that they, they see that help is the only alternative. Going back to their lifestyles, not.
Gotcha. One of the difficulties with that approach may be changes at the judicial system. The Justice Reinvestment Act that came through last year has put a greater emphasis on treatment rather than incarceration for prisoners, in part due to fiscal responsibility. For every, every person you arrest for drug possession or dealing, you've now got to pay X amount of dollars to house them until trial, feed them, clothe them, shelter them. I'm wondering, then, would you be in favor of working with the delegation to try and turn back some of those initiatives if that's kind of the direction that you're heading in?
Correct. We need to, you know, it goes back to, you know, giving a child a timeout or a child maybe getting a spanking on the bottom. What would make you stop something quicker? I think, you know, speaking for my children, they didn't need any of that. The timeout worked for them, but it doesn't work for everybody. So I think we need to go back and look at those things and say that this is a severe problem that just saying we're going to give you help, we're not, we're actually giving them an excuse or a way out in a lot of cases. Because if you're going to take the easier way, you're going to go and go to recovery that you're maybe not ready for yet.
All right. So, Bill, kind of a similar question. I'm going to assume if I gave Rich $100,000 to allocate from the council and go to law enforcement, is that a fair assumption, Rich?
Absolutely.
I give you $100,000, Bill, where would you try to invest that money for the biggest bang for your buck in terms of addressing the opioid crisis?
Because it can't be addressed with just one single approach. I think I would take a look at, you know, where the investment paid its greatest dividends. Certainly, law enforcement has to be one of those. As I said, you know, we have an incredible county sheriff's department here headed by Scott Adams, and he's done wonderful things with, with our county police, or county sheriff's office. So certainly, some of the allocation would go to law enforcement. Some of it has to go to education. We have to get to these children before this becomes normalcy, before it becomes a way of life and just something that's accepted in their life. And then we have to have a certain portion of that allocated to recovery programs. So, you know, within law enforcement, yeah, the JRA Act has, you know, has put us in a very difficult situation because it, to some degree, ties the hands of those that are